Can I ask you to speak into the mic so Duana can hear you?
Hi, Duana. Sorry. I should, I could email this to you as well. Duana, I handed out a board, or, well, it says monthly time use evaluation, but actually, I put it together for the whole quarter, January through March. And that is something that I've been promising Rosie that we would start working together on. And Rosie, I'm going to make good on that yet. So I owe you a penny for being out of integrity. But I went ahead and did that for the, these last three months. I was saying that it's been an outlier. And given the budget sessions, which, by the way, Matt's getting my folks from across the country to please share because to the budget workshops that you all, that you all had here, they will, they're being shared as an exemplar. Yeah, and, and I think those were really valuable times spent for you all. And then, of course, your superintendent search. A lot of that is, there's a number of things that I think are counted in closed session. I did find one, one calculation of minutes for closed session. To be honest, I didn't spend a ton of time looking for things that weren't right there in the, in the video. I just wanted to get a basic, so we can, we can look at this again and, and get it. Let's give you a general idea. So this isn't a, we'll get it figured out.
Cindy, so to be clear, is the other in other budget?
A lot of it is budget. A lot of it's budget. And then it's stuff that, it's just other things that didn't fit into, so, into those other sections. Like when you, when points of privilege at the end of a meeting, that fits into other. So, and then voting, for example, I counted in there. You know, it takes you maybe a minute or two on the consent agenda, half a minute or a minute. And then all of those public hearings, and anytime you have an action item, those, all of those minutes counted are voting. So, yeah.
Maybe, maybe this is in here and I just don't see it. Public comment, though, that's not counted, right?
That is not, public comment isn't counted as other. Because it is not two-way engagement.
So when our public comes and speaks to us, it actually counts against our time that we should be monitoring?
It counts against time, the, it counts as part of the time the board is spending. And when you're thinking about, the recommendation is to spend at least 50% of your time doing that, monitoring goals, then the other 50% can be spent on other board work. So the other is that, you know, so having time spent 50% in other places that are not goal monitoring is okay, so long as it's board work. So hearing from the public, even a public comment, it doesn't necessarily count against you, but it doesn't count as goal monitoring.
And something else-
Does that make sense?
Something else to consider is we've bumped two reports due to the cyber attack. So those are reports that were scheduled to be done within this time. That would have offset some of the budget sessions a little bit more.
Yes, that was the other thing I, I was thinking about as well, is that your monitoring's good. So your percentage would have been a little bit higher than it is, is here, too. Okay, so, funny thing, it was a year ago tomorrow that I sat, I was on the stage with you doing the first, for the first self-evaluation that I helped you all with. So, time flies, or it doesn't, I don't know. And at that time, we talked about the value of continuous improvement. We made connections between the board's self-evaluation and continuous improvement to both the transition at that time of Matt into the position of interim superintendent, what would at that point be your eventual superintendent search. And now you are here, well into your superintendent search process, and here we are again. And I, I understand that this has been, like I said, it's been an outlier quarter. You've had a lot going on. And I understand where this can seem like extra work. However, this, this continues to be, be that work of, the work of doing a self-evaluation. Does anybody remember what the connection was that we made between board self-evaluation and board's continuous improvement with superintendent search process?
We discussed, if I remember correctly, how can we, how can we expect something or hold someone accountable for something when we're not holding ourselves accountable? And wanted to make sure that we were staying true to our word so that we could have a firm foundation when, when holding our leaders accountable, our leader accountable.
Yeah, so there's, that's, that can be part of it, that you're demonstrating that self-accountability in, through the board's self-evaluation and your continuous improvement, the same that you would expect for, as you're holding a leader of the district accountable. Anybody else?
Yeah, it feels like we also talked about modeling what we expect of others. So if we're not doing it, how we, how can we expect others to do it? Whether it's, you know, the superintendent or, you know, cabinet members, et cetera. So we have to lead by example, call that.
Yeah, there's, often boards think that they're, aside from obviously hiring the superintendent, think that their most important job is setting policy. Actually, one of the most important things boards do is set culture from the top of the organization. So by modeling what you expect of others, that helps attract talent. It also, the more, the more rigorous the board can be about understanding and defining its role in governance versus the board's, versus superintendent role in management, that also serves to attract, attract the type of talent that you would want leading your district. So just wanted to bring that back around full circle, since it is, here we are a year later. And, and, yeah, I know, I, I, I hear people asking, when are they going to be done? I don't know anything. So thank you for all the work that you're doing to ensure that, ensure that we have our students and families well taken care of by the diligent work that you're doing in, in hiring, in this hiring process that you're undertaking. So I'm getting off track here, but I'm, I am feeling great, I'm feeling major gratitude toward all of you as, as a community member as well. So, let's get into the quarterly evaluation. What I wanted to do was have you partner up, just to come to consensus with a partner on where you are right now. What you, what you project your score could be in three months and what you project could be in six months, and what those corresponding activities are that you would need to do in the next three to six, six months to move on that score. Because what I want to do is to make sure that we document that and that that goes into your implementation timeline, so that we're sure that we keep on track, actually, getting it done. And, and we can talk, talk more about what's realistic as you, as you keep going. I did go ahead, I, I'd imagine that you have your results that you have come up with in front of you. I want to have it imprinted out, clean copies of the, each of the tabs, just so you can come to a consensus point. I was gonna have you partner up, or would it be, could we go into small groups? Would that work and somebody call-
We've got Duana on. Duana, you still there?
Yeah, that's right. Duana?
Yes, I am still here.
Okay, so I'm not for sure how we accommodate that.
We can-
On the phone, are you just-
Yeah. Are you want-
Say that again, Jackie?
Do we have to break it small first?
Oh, you want to do it as large group?
We can.
Let's do that, sort of, given the odd nature of our-
I'm still gonna, okay.
Hybrid meeting tonight.
So Duana, get your results out, and we'll, we'll go through this. We're gonna go through this one by one. Does anybody want a hard copy of this? I have it.
Is it just a blank?
It's just a blank.
Okay. I'll take it. Thank you.
Want anybody else?
I'll take one. And Cindy, is the goal for us to send this to you for, like, total aggregation?
That's what we're doing right now.
So we were supposed, we were asked to individually score?
Correct.
And then tonight is about sorting out where collectively we are based on our own-
What can we agree to?
Yeah.
What action steps are we agreeing to, to get us to the next place?
Right.
So agreeing on what the score is, because you all have a little bit, something a little bit different. And then, so that we decide, you decide as a board and superintendent team, when he gets back, what that is, and then what the steps are, what the items are that you want to complete between now and the next three months, or now and the next six months.
Sure thing. Goals and a plan for last year?
Um, there, no, because we did it, we did it in, if you all remember, you were on your way to your winter dinner, your winter break dinner. So we were really, really fast.
I was clear, because I don't remember doing this before, so I wanted to know if we had them. I needed refresh.
We didn't do it with fidelity.
Priorities that night.
No judgment. That's the thing. No judgment. This is, this is about, just, just like with your monitoring reports, about looking at what your current reality is and seeing what you want to do to change that reality.
Yep.
So, let's start. Who will share what their score was for vision and goals for this quarter? Just one person, tell me what it was. Does anybody have any, thank you, Maria. Does anyone have anything different than that, than zero?
No. I did, but maybe it's because I wasn't reading the questions right. I always hate it when they're asking the negative.
It, it takes me a while to flip my-
Well, can I just, I actually wrote that down. I know it sounds really silly, but it took me more time because of how it's written. Do we, can we write it? In the, like, I'm just wondering why it's written that way.
It's just the red section on each one, right?
Yeah, it's just the not student outcomes focus. So if you haven't adopted goals. I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, but-
It's fine.
Yeah.
Now that we've done it once.
Okay. Maybe, Maria, you could share your rationale for why it says zero? And then, and then we can see if anybody disagrees.
The first in the red. Let's see, I had a yes. It was the third one. And if you did have one, then it'd just give you a zero.
Right.
Yeah, so you had no on the board has not hosted opportunities to listen in the previous 36-month period?
Right. Wait, did I do, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, here we are.
It is.
Okay, going at it again. Okay, yes.
And I have that as a, marked as a no, because I thought we had done it in the, the last 36 months.
It's funny, because I would say that, too, but our, but what we listened to, now that I'm reflecting, was not, it was not for vision and values, it was for superintendent search.
Yep.
So that's the clarification.
Exactly.
I also put a yes that I don't believe that we consistently demonstrate and distinguish between inputs, outputs, and outcomes.
How do we do?
Oh.
Well, I think it's interpretation. It's how, I think it's how we interpret these. And I don't know that we have refined our evaluation process to the point where there's a common understanding about what we mean when we say these things. So, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So if you think about inputs, so the programs and strategies that happen at the beginning of a cycle, outputs are those measures, how you can measure something in the middle of the cycle. So like your interim goals, interim guardrails are outputs. And there's a whole lot of other outputs as well, I'm just, and then outcomes are at the end of a cycle. And then we go on to differentiate between and other outcomes, but yeah. Okay. So I think we're in agreement that we're at a zero now for vision and goals. Does, and then, how about the other sections? Did anybody have anything marked on those other sections that has not, that is not true? And no's on those orange, green, on vision and value, vision and goals?
Nope.
All true.
Are we all, all yeses everywhere else but four? Okay, so does anybody see anything changing as far as in that red section moving?
No.
No. In the next three to six months?
I thought we had said that this summer, we had discussed going into the community to discuss vision and values. Did I get that wrong?
I, I think that has been a past conversation. Does the board think that that is realistic and-
Yeah, I do agree, it has been a conversation. I just don't know that, that that is going to be realistic with onboarding, potentially onboarding a new leader and the PD that we will be undergoing and-
Still being in the midst of a monitoring.
Well, that's, I feel like we really need to dig in and have kind of conversations. So I don't know if that's having it here, because you could argue on the flip side that it's a really critical time with a potential new superintendent to be out in the community and discussing vision and values. And so I'm just wondering where the appropriate time to have that conversation will be.
I don't disagree. That would be us going into the community, not necessarily the superintendent. But I, I don't disagree that it needs to be a priority. I'm just not sure that it's realistic.
Well-
We can certainly make it if that, if-
I think it also depends on how we choose to frame the conversation. Do you frame the conversation around, this is where we're focused through 2026? And we are seeking your understanding of that versus what I think Jackie is suggesting, which is sort of starting from scratch, which I don't believe is consistent with our current monitoring schedule and calendar when we have goals that are established through 2026, right?
Yeah, but I don't, I think that everything we were coached was not that you keep a, keep a goal. I think you go back to the community every three years, whether you hit a goal or not, to get that feedback and reevaluate. And I, I feel like we've talked, we talked about that a lot when we reaffirmed these were going to be our goals. It was sort of with the caveat that we were going to be going back to the community this year to reaffirm that those were still what the community said that they wanted, or if there was other things that the community wants us to be doing.
And I, I think that, I mean, I said probably we would not be doing this, although we have discussed it for the same reason, having a superintendent. And I almost, you know, what, what's the role of the superintendent in, in that effort? Because I feel like, so there is nothing really that should interfere with us going into the community?
So the, so what I would offer is that, I appreciate this discussion, and I do think you need to have it. I think being cognizant that there's always going to be something in front of you. There's always going to be the next big thing that is going to cause you to want to, let's just wait. There's going to be an election, let's just wait, there's going to be this. So there are things to always, to always keep in mind. You're, you're going, I would encourage you to really think beyond what, what those roadblocks are, because you're always going to have something big come up. I know superintendent is huge, and bringing a new superintendent on is huge. But I wouldn't let that, for the sake of that, be what holds you back. And I, I don't know that you have to decide it right this minute. It's probably not going to happen in the next three months, right, March? And I can't do my math.
Well, we're already 18 days into month one.
Right.
So because we're late in our, in our review. I think that we could get it done in the next six months. I just think that we, if we make that decision to get it done in the next six months, then that will impact our additional, when we look at the additional items, because I don't have words anymore, that we just need to take that into consideration. I think that as a board, during the superintendent search and setting up those listening sessions, we have an incredible framework already set up by that committee of how we started with community engagement and outreach, and we can just build upon that. So I certainly think it's doable, as long as we're all on the, as long as we all agree that that's where our resources are going to go in the next six months. And this is the indicator that has the highest score, per se, so-
And I agree, but it's-
It's a conversation we've had several times.
Yeah.
So let me just interject here, because I want to really be respectful of individuals' positions on whether or not we go to the community to discuss our vision and how that translates into our board goals. Us that we have, and the process that we went through was specifically focused on how we fund the things that we have indicated are our areas of focus with the current three goals. So I know that there's trepidation, and people don't always like our goals, whether it's members of this board or members of the community. But I also think that we have an obligation to see some of this through. So, you know, I, I'm not really about sort of interrupting the flow just because we don't like them. I'm about trying to figure out how we level out. And if we determine there's a new goal we wish to add, I'm certainly welcome to consider that. But I think we're at a very critical juncture right now, and we have to consider how our budget, how the work that the staff is already doing and the professional development that we're investing in really supports the path that we're currently on. And I think throwing the baby out with the bathwater is not what we need to do at this point.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're probably, so when I'm thinking about listening for vision and values, I think, and, and this is probably where everyone does need to get on the same page as far as what that actually means. It, it, and I think, Jenna, you might have said it, affirming goals that we have, but perhaps finding that it might be something additional. When we're talking about vision, it's about what we want student, what our community wants students to know and be able to do. And then using that data. So the goals don't just happen by folks saying, I don't like that goal, even out in the community. It's about, we want our kids to read on grade level. And then it's up to the board to look at where those high leverage, high need spaces are. I don't know, but I'd have to imagine that those haven't necessarily changed. And when we talk about high leverage, high need areas, it's not, it's not about, it's about where, if that special treatment happens, that, that can be a win for kids. No matter how many students are in that group, but it's, it's, and in the case of your goals, it's been black males, because if the system can work for them, then it should rise all tide. So I think, I think going out with the idea that there's going to be a full-scale change of goals is probably not the right mindset to go about, about it. But I think, I think for the sake of this conversation, I think there's appetite to continue talking about this. Am I hearing that? It might be, and I, something, and perhaps what I can do is put together a rough timeline and idea of what that would be as far as what the planning, what the type of questioning and prefacing for that would look like, if that would be helpful. Like how to frame it and whatnot.
I just feel like we are supposed to represent the vision and values of the community. And so if we're doing that, we'll hear that, and we'll know that. And if we hear differently, then I think that's our responsibility to hear it. And what, I don't know when the right time is to make the pivot, but I think we need to, we owe it to our community to go out and have those conversations and then take that information and make a choice with it. We're long overdue of going to the community. We've kicked it out, kicked it out. And I recall this conversation, when we adopted these for another three years, the conversation was, while we have an interim coming in, because there's always going to be something.
Right.
And so I just feel like we owe it in our jobs to go out and do what we're supposed to be doing, which is affirming, or if it's different, then I think we have those conversations at that point in time.
I, I want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for something we're not willing to do as well. You know, having the conversations in the community and hearing what the community has may yield something totally and completely different than what we're currently doing. And I, I respect the community, but I also know where we've planted a stake in the ground as well. So how do we balance those in a way that honors what we're currently doing and the budget process that we went through, but also where the community would like to see us go? I don't have the answer to that question, but I also don't want us to set ourselves up for something we either aren't able to do, don't have a willingness to do, or find ourselves struggling to figure out how we do it. I mean, that's the reality of opening this up again completely.
So, Duana, we haven't heard from you. And I don't know that I've heard, I've, and I want to make sure I've heard from everyone before we keep moving. Okay, go ahead, Duana.
Yeah, I just think intentionality matters on prefacing those conversations. I just think that we just need to be careful with how we present that that's going to be, if it's, if it's a decision to move forward, patients, considering that any change we make will shift the entire culture of staff and just kind of where they put their focus on. So I just say proceed with caution, but if we're going to have that conversation, look forward as we're moving forward and prefacing intentionality.
Okay, thank you. So I think what I am not absolutely clear on is, are we, is this going to be a quarter? Or, or wait a little longer?
I think it'd be helpful to make a decision on the merits of what we're doing and then figure out when the best time maybe to do it.
Okay.
That's how I would approach it.
It's probably not going to happen in quarters.
Not it. I think, like, I guess I'm saying, let's actually decide. It's one thing to say, should we do it or not? That, that really comes first, because otherwise, yeah. So I would just say that, that to me is the more important question, and when we do it is secondary.
Just don't understand what you're, like, what's a merit.
We should discuss if we're doing it or not, before we discuss when we're doing it, is all I'm suggesting.
Can this be tabled for a work session or some other?
Right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of wondering about, yeah, to keep, because it is 7:27, and I think somebody had a hard stop at 7:30. So, yep, so we won't be able to continue, continue the conversation about this. I think-
I think, yeah, I think that this is a conversation, that is the conversation to happen.
When would you like to have that conversation?
We need to schedule a work session, it sounds like.
Yeah, we need to schedule a work session to determine what next steps are on this. And I'm happy to.
Isn't that this work session? Isn't that this work session? Exciting, we're looking at what we've accomplished, we're looking at what we want to accomplish, and this is one of the items. I guess I don't. Okay.
So we need to decide tonight if we're doing it?
So how about we determine that within the next quarter, we'll have the discussion? So within the next three months, we'll have the discussion about where we go with this. And that sets us up for then the next steps. I'm worried that we're on the very first item on the evaluation. We have one person that has to exit in a few minutes and we still have the rest of the evaluation to go to. So I'm respectful of this being considered a work session, but I do think we need to put a placeholder on this one that indicates when we're going to do it so that we can move forward, because we'll be here all night otherwise. So can we agree that this could be in the next three months that we discern and determine how best to move forward with going out to the community on the vision and values, or the vision?
I don't know if I'm on, okay. So this is, so really we have, is it something that can be decided by the end of this quarter? So by June 30th? Because we have two meetings in May, two meetings in June. Can we anticipate one of those meetings in May 10th? I don't know, I think you're out of the country for one of them.
I'm at the first meeting.
Yeah.
You can do it without me, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't care.
But that, maybe we can have the deeper conversation around the intentionality of the sessions? And then what do we want to achieve?
I think, so I think the discussion first is, are you going to do it? Not what it's going to look like.
Do we, do we proceed?
Do we proceed? And then, and then the win comes after the?
Well, if I would, if that's the case, I would ask, we don't have a work session about, are we going to do it? But rather, it's a work session of, are we going to do it? Yes, now we're going down the chart to say, what's the intentionality? And be planful and not a work session to say yes or no. That's my recommendation.
I would agree. I think that's consistent with what Jackie suggested too.
Okay. And is that the next, so by next quarter, so by the next self-evaluation then? Is that, so it doesn't need to be a?
By the end of June, when's the next self-evaluation?
Yeah, end of June.
It would be the first meeting of July to go from April through June.
Is there any guidance that you can provide, Cindy, around what it's supposed to look like to go out to your community?
And? Yeah, and so that's what I was talking about, that I could bring back kind of what a rough timeline would look like, what, how it might be framed, knowing that you're already, you know, that you have a set of goals that you're in the midst of and have just budgeted for because, you know, you'll be middle, if you proceed in doing it, it'll be a budget cycle. And also with, you got all the momentum on that this evening. So with that in mind, and then also how long it would take, like how long you would need to take to actually do it? What you'd have to do with that information? What your superintendent would have to bring to the table? Because the superintendent would have to have a part in bringing information to the table if there was anything you learned that needed to be different and/or added.
Well, and when part of this also, I mean, you know, again, we may go out and doing is where the community wants us to be. We don't know. But part of this is all what's happening, how we're progressing, are we on track? Like, so it's not just like, we're throwing these out and we're coming in and tell us now what you want. Like I said, I don't know, maybe or maybe not, we will hear different things. We may still hear what we're hearing, you know, when I wasn't on the board when these goals were set, but what you all heard when the goals were set. But it's also giving them that update and informing them of where we're at.
Yeah, and again, it's about vision and values, not necessarily specific goals. So when we think about, you know, I know, well, I'm not going to get too far down the line, but, yeah. So by next self-evaluation, that's when that'll happen. For now, for quarter two, we know we'll come in with another zero. All right. Values and guardrails, I'm going to, we can probably move past, move through that one pretty quickly because it's going to be the same issue. Does anybody disagree with that?
No.
No.
So zero and zero. Monitoring. And Duana, please pipe in whenever you need to.
Okay, I will.
I had zero for monitoring and accountability.
Okay, did anybody have anything different than zero for monitoring and accountability?
No.
Nope.
So I have a question on that actually, because I think for, the board does not track its use of time in board authorized public meetings. We haven't, but then we got this, so I guess I'm asking for interpretation.
My interpretation is that we don't get credit for it because we hadn't really.
Done it publicly or?
Yeah, that was my interpretation.
Yeah.
So I think the action steps are Rosie and Cindy calibrating. And then once that calibration occurs, Rosie will complete it every month? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, because I think it's something that you can incorporate into, you know, items of privilege or wherever you want to, just to report out on how much time you're spending monitoring goals or in an information section, however you all choose to do that. But yeah, so.
So I have us going to 10 in three months, because I know that you are working on.
Because of the.
Calibrating.
Yeah.
Are we on monitoring and accountability?
Yes.
We are.
I'm, okay.
I guess if I'm reading 10 correctly, Kim, the board invests no less than 10% of the total board authorized public meeting minutes monitoring its goals. You're just top of the, back of the napkin math, we're doing that already.
Yeah, so we'll get a no on the item in red that is currently a yes. The board does not track its use of time evaluation. And having not known where we were at with that particular number, this first indicator, we're at 13%.
Got it, so we're already.
I just went to, you know, the lowest.
Got it.
Common denominator. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I continually put, and it's not a big thing, I think it's just how this is worded though too. On the second bullet, the board does not schedule each goal to be monitored at least four times per year. We monitor our goals three times and that's primarily because of when data is due. So I don't know if that really matters, that it says four and we really do three? Should we change it?
But we don't have data to do it.
Though.
Yeah.
We have multiple interim goals for each of our goals.
But if you look at the monitoring calendar, I thought I pulled up the most correct one. I was looking at how many times a year we monitor goal one, two, and three, and it looked like only three times per year for each of them. I think for one goal this year, or maybe four times because of just how the data came, like, end of the year. I don't know, it was just wonky, but.
Yeah, if you use fourth grade literacy as an example, we monitored one interim goal, that particular, well, I have to pull up the monitoring calendar. But we're monitoring that interim goal multiple times a year. And there are three interim goals for fourth grade literacy.
I don't fill out the calendar again, the one I was looking at, because I could have been just completely off. I was specifically looking for goal one, goal two, goal three. And that's what I was counting, and I swear I wasn't counting each of them three times. So I could have, I think I just went to Board Docs, Docs and did a.
Well, I think the other question to Cindy is, what's magic about four times?
Yeah.
Is that because it's consistent with monitoring every quarter? Or is there something magical about student outcomes focused governance that sort of signals four times?
Yeah, so I think it's that cadence of accountability, so keeping that cadence. And I was trying to, so keeping that regular check-in and having enough foresight to, enough times between of that interim, of those interim measures to actually be able to make course corrections prior to that final measure.
But I also think I heard that data availability impacts the frequency as well.
It does, and we only, we monitor the goal themselves, the actual goal measure.
Once.
Right.
But they're more.
That are associated with those goals.
Right, and so each goal through its interim goals is being monitored.
At least.
At least four times per.
Yes.
So do we get credit for that?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful, because I was reading it literally.
All right, so going from zero to 10. Communication and collaboration, we're just going to focus on this quarter and next quarter. Communication and collaboration, and Duana, anything to add at that?
I had, for that one, sorry, I'm going back and forth on the same computer. My other one's not working. I had zero right now. And had us, I think I still had us at a zero and getting to a one in the next six months.
For communication and collaboration?
I think, hold on, let me make sure I'm looking at the right one.
You had, you moved it to one in quarter two.
For the next three months? Okay, okay.
Did anybody have anything different than zero? And then how about for your movement?
I still had zero.
This was the same, used to listen, so, yeah. So we're, it impacts a lot of our scores.
Yep, okay, so the listening sessions, Duana, are on the red, in the red yet? Moving on to unity and trust.
I put three, but I think I put question marks for meeting student outcomes because I know we made some changes and I'm not sure of the changes we made in policy, if we covered all of the green. Anybody?
For unity and trust?
So is the question whether or not our ethics and conflict of interest statements?
Yeah, I printed it out, Kim, and I don't know what the forums were. I just, it says, the board has included language in.
In its ethics and conflict of interest statement, and then there's.
I feel like, didn't we do those in the policies?
Is that unity and trust versus?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we're in unity and trust now.
Oh, okay. Behind. Yeah, I struggled with the conflict of interest and ethics statement because I just didn't recall what all was in it.
So we're definitely a three, but I think are we more than a three?
As a one.
We have a conflict of interest statement and everyone completes that on their own and signs it. It does not include some of the things that are identified to get us to a three regarding campaign contributions, those sorts of things.
I think we had this discussion though, if I recall.
And you were willing to.
And I think we said that we would be willing to live with whatever our score is because some of this just feels a little intrusive.
That's true. And I think it was just prior, not a high priority.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the time, yeah.
So the first one is do not give operational advice or instructions to staff members. I think we all agree that we don't have it codified, well, we do have it codified. We have a policy in place to codify how we interact with staff. So would everyone agree that we're a yes there?
Which one are you looking at?
Row 13, the board has included language in its ethics and conflicts of interest statement, requiring that board members do not give operational advice or instructions to staff members. So it's not specific in the ethics and conflicts of interest statement, but we do have board policy around how we, around interactions with staff that require us to go through the superintendent.
We talked about revising that statement to be inclusive, but I don't know if we just kind of said, we got in a policy.
Well, I think that our conflict of interest is more about disclosure. It really had very little to do with ethics. Right? I mean, there may be just sort of an umbrella statement, but it's really intended for us to disclose where we have conflicts, not to articulate anything else.
So I'm just trying to get us to the ones that we would say yes to.
So I think by having, within your operating procedures about, around not giving operational advice, I think that is fine and counts, even though it's not listed in that statement. I think that you have the policy is.
Sufficient?
Is sufficient.
We'll remind ourselves of that the next time we do this.
Yes.
And then also remind ourselves that we have agreed to disagree on the remaining ones.
So I'll add that to my notes. So we answer yes to the first two, is that correct? And no to the second two in the green?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think, and then the other pieces that are important in unity and trust are in that blue section around, around the adherence to all policies governing board operating procedures and that the board agrees during the most recent self-evaluation that all board members adhered to all policies governing board operating procedures during the previous evaluation period. So those would be your governing and delegation policies.
Well, and would our evidence of that be that no one has raised a question or an issue with how someone else has conducted themselves? So our evidence of that would be, we didn't have any, any claims, that's not the word, but any grievances filed against a fellow board member.
Fellow board member or have conversations.
Right.
And it would also be a self-report, because it would be a, I mean, you know what, you know your own activities.
There was, there was one that I recall.
You've been sitting around this whole time, I don't want to leave you out. So Kim is recalling that there's something about adherence. I want to make sure Matt gets in on this. All board members and the superintendent agreed during the most recent self-evaluation that none of the board members have given instructions to staff members. I think, I think that's.
I concur with that. I have not been, let's see if you think that.
Okay.
All board members have memorized all of the board goals and the current status of each. Hell no.
Okay.
I know them in the macro, I don't know them in the micro.
And the last one will be no, because the 80 threshold. So that's something, I think, as you continue to do these quarterly self-evaluations, on that whole section, that's about looking back through your governing policy and making sure that board members are adhering to them, that you recall what they are, recall all of the things in. that you recall what they are, recall all of the things in there and the reasoning why. And then, Matt, that your folks know how to, refer board members if they forget or what have you, so there's that piece. Matt, have you had any, any differences of opinion? Because you've been very quiet. Okay, all right. All right, just want to make sure. All right. So unity and trust. Almost done here. Zero and one, is that where we're going?
I think we're one and one.
One and one.
I was going to say one and one.
One and one. Fine. Anything else on that?
I just put in my notes that we're agreeing that we're going to stay at one for right now, but with the hope to get to all yeses in blue, even though that's not going to get us to an improved score.
Okay. Everybody cool with that? All right, finally, um, continuous improvement.
That was the last.
Zero, zero, zero.
I had us a zero.
Me too.
Add us as zero.
Zeros. Okay. And then probably staying at zero.
Yep.
Yes.
Is there anything, any steps in any of the other section, in any of the sections that you would like to take in the next three months, even if it's not going to move you to zero, off of zero, I mean?
I think the first item in approaching, um, the time use can be a move to a yes in the next three months. I'm not comfortable asking the staff to track time at this, at this ti- time, a staff time use evaluation at this time, because I know what a heavy lift that is, and with it, I, I don't think it makes sense with the transition that's about to happen.
But that one says the board tracks it. We're not asking the staff to track it. Is the board willing to do that, is really the question? And do we have the bandwidth to do that?
I think that also includes the tracking of the time of any staff members. So, like, that's the one thing. There's one thing to track our time and what we spend, but it's another thing to track staff. And our staff responding to requests we're giving them, like, how much time is staff spending on our work? And that's one thing we haven't, I, I would like to see that done at some point. I don't know if we'll be able to get that done in three months or six months, but it would be interesting. And throwing out the example, and I think AJ shared it at one point in a coaching session, at least I've heard him talk about it, where a district did that, and they realized with how much time staff is spending on board requests and/or board conversations, they could hire another teacher. Like, that was, because it's just all that, so that's just something we haven't done. I would, I would be interested to know staff time.
I agree, I just think it makes more sense after, I think it's going to look different after the transition, potentially.
Futuristic, then.
Yeah. The other item I think that we could move to a yes would be, uh, under approaching, is the board has, um, the public, the recognition portion. We, like, today we recognized, um, awards that were received, but, um, using that time to recognize something that aligns with the goals and guardrails, rather than, um, awards or state championships or that sort of thing, particularly when we're on track. I think we adjust that time to highlighting the schools that are using Skills Block, or I don't, I don't know. Bringing in students that are meeting there.
Is that something that you would want to start in the next three months?
I would like to hear from other board members.
Yeah, I agree with that. I had that moved over to a yes for that section.
No, I think that's great. I also think it's good, though, to lift up the really amazing things that make, I, I mean, you didn't do it this meeting, maybe filled in right your nose, but I love how last meeting you were like, "Come here, become a astronaut here," or, you know, I mean, I think, I think someone really wise pointed out that, that, uh, these meetings, we, is our chance to show the community what DMPS is and stands for. And I think any opportunity we have to publicly, um, put out the really amazing things that are happening, we shouldn't lose sight of that. So I agree, but I don't want it to come at the expense of uplifting sort of that message of the amazing things that are happening here that make us unique.
So it feels like there are two different placeholders for that. Sort of the district recognitions is really focused and targeted to those things that are specific to our goals. Who's doing well, you know, how do we really illuminate those things? And, you know, the other things that really are about, you know, cheerleading and rah-rah are the things that we cover when we're doing, you know, our board report outs or our superintendent report outs. So that just seems to me to be the way I understood SOFG relative to how district recognitions are focused.
Yep, so do, so doing the recognitions upfront with students, staff, schools that are relative to the goals, and doing the, um, come here, become here, rah-rah, all of it.
Amazing, unique.
The amazing, unique things, thank you, thank you. I couldn't recall, um, to hit on that at the, at that report out section, where Matt, this time, doubled down, doubled down. Yeah. And doing the, um, recognitions relative to goals, goals would, is doable on your, on your end to, to make that happen, to get students, or you, your staff? So.
You know, the one thing that I would really caution in that regard, and it gives me a little pause, and I think we can overcome this, is I think about the Atlanta example. Where, you know, they were over, um, where they were not in compliance with testing and those sorts of things because they wanted the recognition. And being really thoughtful about how we recognize without either allowing others to feel inadequate or, you know, not recognized, but also not forcing them just to get recognized to do things that are either not appropriate or are not consistent with best practice, et cetera. So I think we have to figure out sort of the balanced approach, a way that, you know, recognizes outstanding, you know, contributions, but also doesn't force people to feel like, well, gosh, I gotta, you know, be in that, in that conversation. And in order to do that, these are the things that I'm going to do. You know, I think you gotta, you gotta figure out sort of what that natural tension is that you can overcome by identifying ways that, you may not be hitting it out of the park here, but you're going to recognize, be recognized because of this.
I agree.
No, I was just thinking, you're, I think you're right, and maybe it's just even recognizing staff that are doing great, great work. I, I get what you're saying. I think we want to be mindful of, of having there be like a have and a have-not kind of situation.
Exactly. Yeah, you got to avoid that, because people's tendencies will be, how do I get on the list? And what's it going to take for me to get there, which we're hoping people will do in an ethical and best practice way. But left to their own devices, people do crazy things.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they do. So we're not going to take people to Wells Fargo Arena, and the lowest performing schools will be up in the nosebleed section with their staff, and the highest performing will be on the ground in pom-poms and the cheer squad and the Isisarats giving it to them, so. And that's what they did. That's what they did. Oh, yeah, it was bad. It was bad.
Never heard that.
Okay.
Anything else on that section?
No, I mean, the one thing that, for me, that I still hold out that we won't get to a five in the next six months is the fact that we do have in there that, um, the board includes students as presenters in at least one of the SOFG training sessions. We haven't even talked around how we engage students in this process. So I don't know if we ever put forth a plan to say, or if we're okay to say we will never achieve.
So one of the things, just for, um, I was at, in Amber Graber's class today, and I know Jackie was before, and you were, and, yeah. One of the things that I noodled with, with Amber was, um, because I believe I will be helping with your next community and candidate forum, is to see if there are students, if, if she thought that there would be any of her students who would geek out on learning about and, um, presenting and doing that candidate, uh, helping with a candidate and community-type training. So I planted that seed there, uh, with.
And she was going to reach out to all AP Gov students, is that correct, or?
Yeah, she said she could, if that was something, um, so I, I can move that ball for you for this next, next go-around, if that's of interest, to get students, start getting students involved.
I think cascading, the work of the board is important so that people understand not only, not only our leaders who are striving to reach our goals, but also our teachers, our community members, and our students who are in the system as well. So I think it adds to that cascading of the work that we value most.
So I just have one other, just quick takeaway. It feels like there are a handful of things that we've identified as, we're just not doing these things. And I think it would be helpful for us, as we prepare for the next evaluation, to identify those things. So we're not even taking the time to even ponder or consider. But I also want to make sure that, especially when it comes to those policy and procedural things, we also indicate that while, say for instance, the perfect example was, we don't have anything specific to, board members giving operational advice in our ethics and conflict of interest statement, it exists. So that, you know, we're not always, well, wait a minute, what did we say about that?
Of that.
So it's sort of a constant reminder of, these are the things that clearly, you know, we've agreed, you know, are non-starters. But we also have identified, this exists someplace else, so we can take credit for it, et cetera, if that makes sense. So my one takeaway is that we will, um, at some point in May or June, complete our discussion on where we're hosting the community listening sessions. The first question is, do we do it? And if we agree that we're going to do it, it's what we're seeking in doing that, and how we process that as a way to sort of set us up moving forward.
Do you want to do that in May or June, or when we do the next evaluation? And that, and be.
Prior to.
Prior. So May or June is when you're going to do that? All right, so I will put together some things so that you have the information I promised.
And then I, my final question is, at what point do we anticipate being able to calibrate on time?
Rosie, let's set up, tomorrow we will set up a meeting to do that, and we will, get this one settled, so it's actual, and then start talking about next. Yep, or, or we can set up a time before you, but I know I'll see you in agenda tomorrow, too. Yep, and then the other thing, too, I am happy to set up time, um, with anybody, uh, either in person or via Zoom to go over that SIBME account. Once you get accustomed to it, it's, it's a nice thing. I am able to, um, right now in there I have your March 7th meeting, and I have it tagged every time there's a question. So you can just click on that spot. But, uh, like, if there's a question you have, I can leave you a question, and whenever you get to it, you can answer it, or vice versa. So it, if there's, if our schedules don't match up, or if you think of something in a odd early hour or late hour, you can put it out there, and, uh, I can do the same, and we can go back and forth that way. But I would be happy to set up either small groups, or one-on-ones, or what have you, to just make sure you're comfortable with the technology and have that all figured out.
Well, and I think for that, it was how we evaluate ourselves, like, how I can look at my questions that I asked. And, and that was one of the things, so we didn't do that eval at the end of our monitoring session. We should all be going back in and looking at our own questions and evaluating our own questions. So what I tried to do tonight, and I sent it to Cindy to make sure I was pretty accurate, I hope, was capture your questions. Now, the downfall is, I don't know who asked which question. I didn't put that, but I have the questions in there, and then it's, it's practice, right? It's, is that a technical, is it a tactical, like, is it strategic? Like, what's, what are the questions I'm trying to get at, um, within this process? So that's how I see.
Yeah, yeah, so I can, um, so what I can do is get the, uh, and the other great thing about SIBME is, you know how in YouTube you can watch a video at two times the speed? In SIBME, you can watch it at three times the speed. So if you need to speed up through things, or, right, but, yeah, speed up through the, the other things that you don't need to hear. Anyway, um, and Matt, I'm happy, uh, to do the same with you to, yes, some other things. And then, just before I forget, on the monitoring, the one recommendation that I would make is to just, when you introduce, when the item is introduced, hand it to the facilitator to read the preamble, then to Matt. I think that'll make more flow better, like, just, um, because the way it happened tonight was Matt gave the summary of the report, and then Kelly talked about what it was. Yeah, what the process was, so just flip-flop that, and maybe sail, and then, yeah. So, be my, back there while I remember it. Anything else for the good of the order? I will, I will send you an email to let you know when the things are in SIBME, and then, um, can set up time. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
One member says, "Well."
Nope, thanks, everyone. Juana, thank you.